School board meeting to order Wednesday, June, January thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen, seven o'clock. I will start with roll call on my left side.
Jan Bettencourt, school board.
Brian Garland, school board.
Sean Carroll, school board.
Russ Holden, superintendent.
Kelly Wussels, business administrator.
Matt McNally, school board.
Paul Scarron, school board.
Sean Williams, school board.
We can read a system.
Jody Bergen, principal of the central library.
Great, thank you. And I think we're all timed to do the pledge of allegiance. Ray, would you like to, uh, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance flag right there? Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, in your honor, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And can we have a moment of silence, please? Okay, thank you. Okay, first up is approval of minutes, December second, two thousand and fifteen, school board minutes. And they are also, um, public hearing from last week, or last meeting. Someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the December second minutes.
Okay, motion by Jan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Matt. Okay, discussion.
Sean, I received an email that perhaps Laura Eldridge, um, was noted as making a comment, perhaps it was Laura Ellison instead.
Yes.
Uh, so we can, we can make that change and I'll have those adjusted. And also a comment attributed to Pamela Clifford, but perhaps that was Laura Ellison as well.
Okay.
So I will make those changes if the board feels that's correct.
Yes. They, and what, that's the, that is the change.
Okay.
Okay. Any other, just any other discussion? Hear none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Next is, um, non-public, December second, two thousand and fifteen. Someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, motion made, motion made by Brian. Clear the second. Paul, any discussion? You hear none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Next, agenda reviews.
We are going to add one item under action, and that will be an approval of a ski, middle school ski race that we're walking into.
Okay. And that'll be under our action items. It'd be H.
H.
Anything else?
Okay.
Perfect. Okay, next, um, on the public forum. I'd like to speak to the crowd for a little bit, been chair here for quite some time. Basically because the board's changed a number of times, and it's changed in a, in a manner that there hasn't anybody, because of their duties, because of their volunteer ism, or whatever they have going on in their personal lives, have not been able to actually be chair. So it's been difficult for me over the last five chairs, just because, because of that. I, I respect what the people up here do volunteer-wise, is volunteering for this position, even though it does come with a hefty paycheck. But in saying so, um, I do it, and I try to be fair, and I hope I'm fair, and I want the public to think that I do listen. We are bound by a code of ethics that we have to sign. Um, when I first got on the board, we didn't have to sign it. Matter of fact, there wasn't one. So the one thing that we did, um, is we did straighten our policies out. George Kurt was on the board, and if everybody knows George, we got our pace, our policies straightened out. That's how he is. And, um, I gotta thank him for that. Paul went through the second round of it, which I appreciate Paul Scarron going through it, because it's monotonous, but we have to have it, because this is how the board runs. We do listen to what the public has to say, we hear them. Sometimes, we as members, I think someone said it the other day, that we probably step on the line, and sometimes the line tries to move as we're stepping on it. We are bound by, not by secrecy, but we're bound by putting the policies in place and having the person to my right implement them, and it all goes down that way. Sometimes, there are things that, I don't want to say slip through the cracks, but there are things that probably aren't happening as fast as, but some people like to see it. Sometimes, when you have a well-oiled machine, which I feel we do, we tend to forget or look sideways or crossways, because we, we know the innards is working the way it should be. Our test scores show that we're working. Our accreditation, um, of the school system shows that it's working. The community members, whether left or right, we're all working. The one thing we have to do is, we have to work as a team, we have to work as a community. And why I preach that we have to follow policy is because that's all we have. And I hope we don't get lost through the cracks, I hope we do recognize stuff. We have hit, we have gone through the last two or three months, some times, everybody on the board here has had their individual personal problems, and some of them have overcome some, um, in a manner that maybe it might've been a little hasty, might've been this or that, but the one thing I gotta say is, Russ Holden is here. He's here to stay, he's gonna be here for a while. Okay? So he's, I feel we did our due diligence when we hired him, I feel we did our due diligence when the community came together and we hired Brenda Minham. And I think every step we take is for the betterment of the school. I said a long time ago that I wanna, I will remain on the board as long as I'm effective. If I'm not effective, I don't want to be on the board. I don't want someone else just pushing me off the side, and I want them to take the, take the torch and run, because I went to this school, I love the school, I love the community. I'm not gonna be popular, some people aren't gonna like all my decisions, but I feel that the decisions I make are for the betterment of the school and the community. Guy Alexander, Dick Webb, Myleene Osborne, I don't miss anybody. They're the ones that decided and got this town together and rallied this town to the point where we have this facility. They ended up going, they went as far as to buy this property a year prior, so that, knowing that this could be a school system here, because when I went to school, that everything was up on the hill. So with them making that move, we decide, they decided, and the community decided they wanted the school. So no matter what dips or bumps or whatever we go through, we all have to work on this as a school system and keep this thing a viable school. And I think they saw the vision between the lake and off the lake, is what I consider it, is being able to, I would say, do the balancing act. Um, I'm a person that, I'm very happy living where I'm living, love to live on the lake, but I can't afford the lake, and I don't want to be on the lake. I mean, ah, I can go back if you want, but, but I'm not gonna be there. And I know that where I am, I'm fine, and my taxes are, are good. I'm happy paying what I'm paying, I'm happy contributing to the town that I grew up in and I went to school. So in saying that, the other thing I want to talk about is stepping on that line. There are people that talk to me a lot, um, I only know a few people in town. Right, Captain? Just a few. And I try not to be generic when I talk to people, but I also want people to realize that when they are, when I am listening, it's coming back to this board, coming back to the superintendent, in a manner that the board will direct us, because I'm just one person. I'm not running this show here, even though a lot of times it looks like I am. I, I, I want input, I want people talking this and that, but, um, when the board asks me to do something, when the board asks me to see people, and the board asks me to talk to people, I talk to them. And that's as far as I go. But I want to caution the people out here that it's tough, sitting on this, sitting here, and then all of a sudden trying to have dialogue and just say, yes, I'm listening, I'm listening, but you can't talk back. Very difficult, um, but it is tough, and again, there are, we're all, we're all guilty of possibly stepping over the line, but I just want people to realize that we're not doing it because we want to be me, or we want to not listen, it's just, that's, that's how we're bound. And the process is, the complaint starts where it starts. If it starts with a teacher, it starts with the administration, it goes to each level. But it has to be in writing, it has to be done that way, because if we don't do it that way, then we have procedures, we have someone coming in the back door, we have someone coming in sideways, and it just doesn't work. So the only way for us to have control on it is to allow that to work, and then if they don't, not happy, they go to the state, and then the state will investigate, because Sunapee's sunapee to them, no different than Hanover, anybody else. They have to do their due diligence as well. And the only time that it really comes to the board level is when it ends up being some form of bullying process, uh, bullying complaint, whereas all the other complaints never really reach this board, and they're not supposed to. If you look at the RSAs, and if you look at, on the website where it talks about all the policies, it doesn't reach the board, because the board does business. This is not the fun part. So we are doing our business in public, so people can see us and watch it, and make sure that we're doing it the proper way. No different than the selectmen. I think you've come to realize that too, on John being on the select board, that's, you're doing your business in public. Although I do take it back, you, you do take more input from the town because of what you're doing, because the school's a little bit different. But the governments are totally different. So that's where we were. And again, I want to make sure that by some of the emails and some of the things that we do, I don't want the board to step over the line, and I would appreciate it if you doesn't get into those kind of conversations, but at least let us know what's going on. Russ's door's open, but again, just because it's open doesn't mean that that starts the, that doesn't start the process. You have, if you have problems, you have to do the formal complaint part. So that's, that's all I want to say on that. Where we're going, we're going, we are, let me take it right there. Where we're going is, Russ has committed himself. We've heard the last two meetings, the issues on both sides. Russ is committed to working on getting ourselves where we need to be, or at least seeing if we can bring people back together. And if people have problems, or complaints, or whatnot, he's gonna take care of them. He's gonna look at them, he's gonna view them, he's going to see if there is any merit to it, and he will handle it. That's his job, he's trained to do it, that's why he's a superintendent. That's why I'm not a superintendent, and that's why everybody out here is not. So this is what we have to put our, hang our hat on, and he is doing his job. And I can tell you right now, he's into it. Now that I know he's staying here, and the intent was always here, it's just, again, some personal problem, but other than that, he's here, and he's here to stay. I hope, and I know, through what he's gonna talk about later, that we are going to actually hopefully pull ourselves together, and no pun intended, get on the same bus and be able to get there and just gel again as a community and get going. And I think, I think we can get there. I'm not broke. Everything's fixable. So that's where we're going. I don't want to belabor it, I don't want to belittle it, but, um, I appreciate you listening to me for a while. The same thing goes, I'm gonna get into the public forums, same thing goes with the mic. I'd like people to raise their hand if they, um, if they want to talk and come forward, because I just definitely want to make sure the secretary hears it. The other thing too is, this isn't complaint time, this, we're not gonna have, like the last two meetings, this isn't where you come up here and, um, you know, carry on like we were doing before. I understand that the other ones, the other side, there were complaints or whatnot before. I understand that part of it. But the agenda items for what the public, if they have any input, is what's on the agenda. We're gonna stick to the agenda, so if there's some on the agenda that anybody else in the public would like to bring forward, or talk, or at least bring to our attention, be very happy to do that, but it's not going to be a back and forth, or anything like that. The administration is here to stay. We're not looking to do any witch hunts. There's, we're not gonna be doing that anymore, it's, that was part of the complaints from the last couple of, um, meetings, and we heard you. Russ is the one that is the person that deals with that. This board right here doesn't deal with personnel issues. It's held up to the administrator right here to deal with that. So if you want someone's head, it's gonna be this guy's right here. Because it goes no further. We don't dictate who, um, who's in the classroom, we don't dictate anything other than we support Russ a hundred percent. And the board is very happy with the administration we have, they're very happy with the principals we have, we're very happy with the assistant principals that we have, and we're very happy with the teachers that we have. And we're very happy with everybody underneath that, custodians, support staff, lunch people, everything. So we got a great school, let's try to pull it together, and work with Russ, and he will look at old complaints, if there's old complaints, and he'll look at new complaints, if there's new complaints. But I hope everybody respects the process, and if there is some issues as far as not understanding the process, he's there, it's on the web, I'm not that great at it, but I can find the stuff. Matter of fact, I printed it off, so I had another book, a hard copy, but, um, I was told to not make it long, so I, I'm gonna stop now, so. But again, I hope everybody respects what I said as far as the mic. And if anybody wants to bring something forward, let me know. And move on.
This is the public forum.
This is the public forum.
Oh, I just had a.
What would you like to talk about, and also you have to state your name.
Uh, Dan Vex.
You gotta come up here and talk. I know, it's awful.
Uh, Dan Vex, and I just saw that, you know, the survey reports are on the agenda, that's why I'm bringing it up, it's on the agenda.
Right.
And I just wanted to know if that's in, are those edited reports, or is that the entire results?
Sure, they are, they're, unfortunately, they're not up on the website at this time, because I haven't received the link back from the, uh, company that we're dealing with. And I continue to work with them, and we'll get it up as soon as it comes back. They are the results themselves. Uh, the only thing that has been taken out are the open-ended response questions, because they were very personal in nature. But all the other results to the questions will be up on the board.
What was the point of the open-ended questions then?
For, the, the survey was for the board, was for the board and the administration.
The survey was?
So the board see, was seeing the whole, all the results, administration's seen all the results, and I'm not going to put things that define character of personnel in our building up on the web, that's not, and that's my decision.
And what gives you the authority to make that decision?
Um, being the superintendent of the school.
What, specifically, what law?
There is no law.
Allows you to?
I, I, we put out the survey.
Edit.
We put out the, it's, it's the school board survey.
Again, what do you, what are you saying?
Was it paid for by the taxpayers?
They brought it, the budget was mine.
Okay.
What he's, what he's basically saying, Dan?
I just want to see the results of the survey.
That's correct, but what he's saying is if it does mirror anybody's, um, character or whatnot, then that's, part's gonna come out, but as far as the rest of it, it's not going.
But you saw it, right?
Yes.
And you saw it, but the public can't see it, it doesn't seem, yeah, but we paid for it. I, I didn't understand it was a private survey when you took it, when we took it.
It was, the, the survey was given, was, was given so that people could give feedback to the board, so the board can develop its goals from that survey.
Sure.
So it was for the board. We, we said that I would share the results once it became public, and that's what we are going to do. We are going to reserve, show the results of the questions.
All the results.
Other than the open-ended response questions.
Uh, well, I, I'd like to disagree with the decision.
Okay. That's good, you can do that.
And I'd like to?
Thank you.
Take to the state, is that what you're telling me to do, Sean?
That, you can take, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, really, because, I mean, there's a reason people answered those surveys, and you're not giving the people the results of the survey, except for parts of it, it's, it doesn't seem right. I don't think you have the authority to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. Okay, good news, student, student rep is not.
So Rachel's at a game tonight, so we wish her luck.
And we will move on to, um, Jody. Do you have anything, or you wanna?
Oh, I do have a question. I was just making sure that public comments.
Yeah.
Um, so there were a lot of activities, uh, I see yesterday in multiple summer, um, December, and a lot of the school can be challenging at times, and we tried to keep things, you know, activities for the kids, stuff ranging from, we did some school-wide candy cane science experiments, and, you know, how candy canes matched in different substances. We did, did a new trick for snowman, snowman, because it was, it was snow, and then I pulled snow. And then, um, on the last day of school before vacation, Mrs. Crean's RPE, uh, teacher organized the Jingle Bell Blitz. She created, uh, virtual teams, kids from all grade levels tried to keep siblings together, they kind of rotated through a segment to win it, type activities, those little competition activities. Um, right now, our students are participating in some mid-year assessments, our class of seventh annual reading benchmark assessment, and the NWA assessment, um, gives our teachers some mid-year information about what adjustments they need to make for instruction. And our winter activities have started, we have eighty-seven students at Mount Sunapee, either skiing or snowboarding, and seven students participating in ski jumping. Other activities include cooking, make your space, make a book, winter sports, and, um, community partnerships with horsemanship, gymnastics, and karate.
Great, thank you. Some people in line.
I have a number of things, um, first, the service club over the holidays, which, um, gave recording, and feedback, uh, during the holidays, which, and the day before the holiday break is one of the, uh, I think the kids' favorite days, where we do little workshops, and again, a number of students ran workshops and conditioned teachers, um, so it was a really productive day, a very good attendance the day before holiday break, so it continues to be an extension that the kids have, um, for that. And instead, we have a foreign language, uh, poetry competition, including Malik, who won a bronze medal. Also, the economics class, uh, partnered with Project Sunapee to create business plans. Uh, Rachel Malanga, who's our representative board, who, uh, who's been here except the snow last night, the basketball game, but I, she was a channel line hometown hero in December, so.
Nice.
We were to take, uh, able to take our honorable field trip to Notre Dame stage to see Mary Poppins in December, and exciting New Hampshire Scholastic Art Awards, we have a new number of students who are recognized this year. Uh, Mike Platt won a gold key for his ceramic chest, uh, Sophia Villarreal won a gold key for her drawing of potatoes, and a silver, a silver key, uh, for her painting of a stag beetle, and Suzanne McCarty won honorable mention for a painting of an owl. Uh, the Scholastic Garden Writing Awards are the most prestigious recognition scholarship program, uh, for three fifteen teens, with tens of, tens of thousands, just a bit of original work each year. So we just got that word actually today. Just, uh, listen.
Great, okay, superintendent's update? Oh, oh, sorry, Karen.
That's all right.
Sorry.
We were fortunate enough that, um, our life skills program was able to start speeding last week, so we had our first day on snow, and that was extraordinary. Um, you know, we've been working really hard at streamlining processes and, um, creating communities that can support all of our kids, and I, I, shout out to the service club for sure. We've been able to engage the service club, um, and use them with elementary students that need extra supports. Uh, we've also been able to build in some peer support at the middle high school level, um, that allow kids to be more independent, and some real methods, which is great.
Thank you. Okay, now you're on.
Thank you. A couple of things going on, one, um, spoke with Derek Trembley, the headmaster of, uh, Mount Royal, uh, he and the, uh, let me see, let me find her name here. Uh, Christie Whipple from the Newport Montessori School have put together a school choice camp fair on January thirtieth, and they read it, all the public schools in the area. Sean is going to either go or send a representative, uh, for a couple hours here, and it's just, again, that they're, they're showing, giving parents what their options are around for schools, and we want Sunapee to be part of that conversation, so I thank Sean for, for getting to go, or going himself and sending some down by the Saturday, uh, so excited about that. I think it's a great idea that, uh, that both Derek and Christie put that together, and thank them for inviting us. We've had some inspections over the last month. Uh, the Department of Labor came in right before the holidays, uh, we have never been inspected by the Department of Labor, um, so I guess it was time for them to show up, and they went through room by room by room, and left no stone unturned. Um, and we're looking for things, um, like hazards, or outlets, or tripping hazards, or ladders, uh, fire extinguishes, horns, doors, all sorts of safety concerns. For having not gone through the process, we did really well, and I commend Matt and his staff for, for keeping the buildings and all the facilities up, up to speed and up to code. Uh, we also got a new local health inspector, and he came in right before vacation as well, these, so it was, it came back to back, went through our buildings, we had to adjust a little bit in the elementary school with getting the water temperature up and the water pressure up, we were able to do that, and so both schools have been signed up with a local health inspector as well. And we are waiting the report back from the Department of Labor. Uh, there's a couple of big things that we're gonna have to address, one is the ladder to the roof at Sunapee Central Elementary School, and if anyone knows where that is or have ever tried to climb that ladder, it's a hazard, uh, so we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do there, how we're gonna adjust it, so. But it was good to, good to go through that process and good to sort of get that feedback. The police, the fire chief has been in as well, and has signed off on, on us as well. PD Day Tuesday coming up, Mount Lewis King Monday, so Rights Day and Professional Development Day. Uh, we will have Health Trust in in the morning, and talking to our, our entire faculty regarding the health insurance coverage and, and the, um, different plans and options and programs that are available through our staff. Again, one of the things with health insurance that you may care, if you belong to health insurance folks and that, you may know, um, it's not just about taking your money, but it's trying to be preventative, and, and that's one of the things that I think I really like about Health Trust, that they're trying to put programs out there to try to help us be a little more preventative about, and take ownership out of our own health. Instead of just going to the doctor and saying what's wrong with me, uh, trying to be, just, again, a little more proactive, a little more, uh, and less reactive to what's going on in our own lives, so. Having them come in and talk to me what's available will be the start of the morning, and then folks will be working on Atlas, which is our curriculum mapping software that we started last year, um, and we have an outline of where we want to be, and we're moving, I think, quite nicely along in that process, and I thank Megan and Jody for that, and sort of spearheading that. We had our, thanks to Mr. Cooney, had our, our juniors sign up for our SAT. Uh, our SAT this year, all juniors will take the SAT as part of the state assessment. Uh, last year, you heard all about smart balance, uh, this year, uh, the state has decided to use the SAT test as the eleventh grade state assessment, um, which is, there's a lot of interesting things that go with that, but, uh, what we had to do is we signed up each individual student by themselves, like they were signing up for the SAT. Um, and so that was a lengthy process, and I thank Moss for going through that, because it was the first time we've gone through it as a state. Uh, he's done it a few times individually, but never having to do that collectively as a group. Uh, and so his patience in making sure everybody got what it they need and got signed up, and we got all the things that we needed, how about kids ready to go for that test coming up. Uh, and lastly, I spent some time with Chief Cahill, uh, Chief, I think, you're here somewhere, right? Ah, you're right there. Chief and I sat down, I don't know if it was the week before vacation, or over vacation, and talked a little bit about school and, and police, and the resources that, and how we can sort of helping one another out, and more, I think, how the police department can sort of help us out. And Chief offered to, uh, look at having an officer come and speak around our health classes. I spoke with Sean, he's gonna work with, uh, Chief and their officer, and, um, Tim Lottori here, our health teacher, to look at, sort of where the appropriate places to have sort of those interactions take place. And then perhaps looking to extend that a little bit, and having the officer maybe in the building for a couple hours during the week, uh, you know, and having set up just as that, as a resource. So both teachers have a resource, students have a resource, uh, even parents have a resource if their questions or concerns that may come up, tell somebody to come in and be able to talk to an officer about maybe things that are going on. You got a parking ticket, you got a speeding ticket, what should I do about it? Yeah, I can tell you, and all the other schools I've been in, as building administrator, I had a school resource. if their questions or concerns that may come up, tell somebody to come in and be able to talk to an officer about maybe things that are going on. You got a parking ticket, you got a speeding ticket, what should I do about it? I can tell you, and all the other schools I've been in, as building administrator, I had a school resource officer, and it's always been a wonderful relationship, wonderful working relationship on both ends. Kids do utilize it as a resource, and I think it helps just with a good sense of community and giving kids positive relationships with police officers, so. Chief, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that conversation?
Yeah, the probably important thing to remember is the officer is our current dear officer in the fifth person.
Oh, you got, Chief, can you come down to the mic, so you can, so you can show us how to do it?
Appreciate it.
Before you, before you get down there, this was brought to my attention...
Yes.
And you're starting at that age right there. This was right, this right here was at the, someone brought it to me, and it's at the library, not our library, but the library over here. It wouldn't hurt to have, I'm going to give it to actually Jody.
We've actually ordered 500 copies of those, we started reading to the kids at the library, kindergarten first grade, all last week, we read right through to the after-school program. We read them books that the library has, about bullying, how to handle, talking and dealing with differences with other kids and adults, and stuff like that. And with that, a company that I, a vendor that I work with, have magazines and public books activity, of course, targeted to those ages.
But it's nice because it has the Sonopie logo on, your logo, which is nice. It's a good touch, but I also think that it's a good, good way to start it at that level.
Yes.
Because that's where it starts. Thank you. Not to get off, but thank you.
Superintendent, but the officer that I would propose would be our current dear officer, he is certified by Dear America, and for the stadium, he has to teach also at the high school level, and for Sonopie, that he's been teaching long enough. Some of those kids who would be probably in the 10th, 11th grade, he would have already taught in the fifth grade, so it kind of makes that whole connection, it's a different curriculum that he'd be teaching, but it does make that contact, and will kind of connect the whole thing together, because the whole project of the high school and at the elementary school is one big curriculum that's really supposed to connect together. We've been talking about it over the years, I realize the school is restricted on their time, and it's more important to teach that than it is to teach some of the dear and stuff, but I've been begging, and I know someone on the hand's been trying to make arrangements and stuff, and it seems like the right time probably to complete that project, but I think that would certainly benefit the kids and stuff, and as the superintendent said, it would be a great resource, I think, for the kids and parents and even the staff here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, and I'll talk more, as you should, Sean, I'm going to outline a plan, and a lot of that's in the informational items, but we are, I am making myself available for, I guess, not for hire, that doesn't seem appropriate. To really get out and about into the community, Chief has a coffee with Chief coming up on the 20th. I'm trying to get down to the library trustees, you're going to hear about the superintendent's forum coming up in February. I know the seniors have a luncheon on Wednesday, we're going to try to get there, and if there are other organizations within the community that would like me to come out and speak to them about the school overall, the budget process, the contract, please give me a call, send me an email, let me know when you meet. Call myself and Tara, we'll either come collectively and do that, or we'll divide up if we have to, but we want you to just be sort of the face of the district, and put ourselves up there and have these conversations so that we can reconnect with the community, we think it's important, so. And you, again, you'll hear a little bit more about that in the information.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to policy. We are, we're at the second reading, so this is gospel after this.
This is.
So do you want to present that, Paul, or make a motion on that?
As soon as I find it, yes. I move that ILDA, second reading.
You want to do both of them together?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second, the others? And policy I M B D, second reading.
Okay, motion made by Paul, the second.
Second.
Seconded by Brian. You can, do you want to just read the caption on those, Paul, so we can at least, so we have an idea what they are?
And policy I L D A is noneducational questionnaires, surveys, and research, priority required by law. And then the second one is high school credit for 7th and 8th grade coursework.
Okay, ask for credit.
Brian did.
Brian did, yeah. Okay, does anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto action items. A.
So we had a request for the boys' basketball varsity trip over to Keene, right before we went on vacation, and just given some of the paperwork, we weren't able to do that here, because we had already had our meeting. So what I'm allowed to do is, I asked you by email, and I had your responses, and that came back as 3 yes, 0 no's, 1 abstention, and 1 no vote, unfortunately. But we did have a quorum there, and so that trip did go out. And Paul, I don't know if you want to talk about, I think you were part of that trip, the boys around the Keene playing and...
Oh, sure.
Why don't we get on the table first, and then, then we can discuss it.
So that would be just approving the vote that was taken in email in a public session. So it was 3 0 1.
Okay, so we're already, we don't have to re-vote on that?
You do not.
Okay, then go ahead, Paul, sorry.
No, it's a trip, Christmas tournament, Keene, we've been doing it, it's Keene State College, not Keene High School, and we get to play in the college facility, it's well-run. We go down, do an overnight, it's a Saturday, Sunday, Monday tournament, we stayed one night overnight. We happen to have a personal chefs, let's see, one of our players brought his personal chef with us, and that would be Rich Ducharme, he's the food service manager at Keene State College, so he provided dinner for us that evening, and it was fabulous. And we had a great time, great bonding time, it's wonderful to go out with the kids, they enjoy it, it's one of those things that I wish we had, when I was younger, we did more traveling, but when I was younger, we didn't. So does anybody have any questions on the board? All right, thank you. I was just the fifth wheel.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, moving on to board goals, work session.
So one of the things that Sean and I were just talking about was, we had talked about getting together as a board to look at having a work session to start the board goals, based upon, obviously, some of the information we see from the survey, based upon input, based upon our test scores, based upon a lot of data that we've now collected over the last six, seven months. I was going to propose something in January, February, but Sean actually brought a good point.
I, normally when we do the board goals, which we did last year before the new members got on, is we do the board goals right after the election, that way the new board members can be part of the process on the board goals of the year. And that's why part of the board goals were already set before, basically for the year. The board goals are, we generally set them, we talk about them, we usually have three or four, sometimes five. We don't have any more than that, because you want to be able to, you know, able to handle them all, or be able to do something. It's no sense in having 10 on there and only be able to do two, so we try to limit the amount of goals we have. You know, in the years past, I remember one of them was the middle school, or, you know, just paying attention or doing certain things, trying to get a certain thing passed, oh, like when we did, when we did the renovation at the Sherburne Gym, that kind of stuff. So we, the goal for us would be trying to get that pushed through, or bring it forward to the town in a manner that the town would like it, accept it, and... So those are some of the goals, that's not all the goals. The old, goals can also be curriculum-based, they can also be just, just really community. One of them last year was communication, we've actually had the communication went up for two years, which I think Paul's the one that actually brought that forward, and I think we worked very diligently at that. So those are the kind of goals or whatnot, so I think it would probably make sense to do that, and like you said...